October Board Workshop. Thank you for being with us tonight. We hope we have an informative meeting ahead of us. With that, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Hand?
Here.
Dr. Hartfield?
Here.
Ms. Manzer, Ms. Montero, Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. West and Mr. Heil.
Here. Board members, this time we would entertain any motions to excuse the absences of any board members not in attendance, particularly Ms. Manzer, who did notify us a week in advance she would not be here. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Dr. Hartfield?
Yes.
Ms. Manzer, Ms. Montero, you have Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. West and Mr. Heil.
Yes. Board members, this time looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the agenda? Please call the roll.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Dr. Hartfield, Ms. Manzer, Ms. Montero, you have Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. West and Mr. Heil.
Yes. With that, we are in the workshop presentation. Dr. Green, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board, and parents and patrons who are here today. This particular workshop session is going to be a important session for us, focusing on Board Policy 1.1. But in particular, it marks the dramatic change of direction that we are about as we've been talking to you about the Missouri Learning Standards, the Common Core, smarter balance, that the day was coming when the new assessment timeline was going to be on the horizon. And that day has come. We are right now at a very pivotal moment as we transition from the old form of assessments that we're giving, given the, under the show-me state standards, those standards have been retired. There's going to be a new set of standards that are being developed. Those are going to reflect a much more rigorous, a much more, a much more demanding standard of performance from our students and from all of us. And so as we make this transition, and we've been preparing for it for quite some time, so it should not be new news, but now it is really seriously here and on the horizon for us. So as we turn the corner here with this new set of expectations and a higher bar, and a much higher bar than has been required of us before, we want to make sure that the board and the parents and patrons in the community are fully understanding what the transition means as we move to even leave acuity, all the things that you learned about acuity. That assessment will retire. The NWEA assessment will be, will replace it. The reason why we have chosen the NWA assessment, because it reflects the national standards. We think that the, we know that the Common Core and Missouri Learning Standards are based on the national standards so that you can compare from state to state how students are doing. So while the state is presently formulating the standards that will be presented to us sometime in, on the next assessment in 2015, we have been diligently working to make sure that our students are not caught by surprise, teachers are not caught by surprise, and so we've instituted an assessment system that we think will better prepare our students for what lies ahead. Having done that, though, we're somewhat flying with limited visibility because the standards that the state is working on, those standards have not been completed yet. We have no illustration of what the assessment will look like. We have no indication of where the benchmarks are of the assessment because they're under development as we speak. And so in one sense, we're flying a little bit without a compass, but we feel that the NWA assessment will give us the right kind of data on our students as we intersect with the State Department's new assessment that will come forward. So that's kind of where we are right now. We've aligned our curriculum to the Missouri Learning Standards, leaving the show-me state standards behind. We've aligned our instructional practice and professional development to position our teachers to be able to access and inspire our students to do well. But we're still, there's a steep learning curve as we make this transition. So this time I'm going to ask Dr. Vicky Marillo to come forward and to give us a bit of a crash course, if you will, on what NWA requires, why we move to that, and what this transition means as we kind of fly into the new set of states, of state standards, without knowing exactly what they are just yet because they're not developed yet.
That is correct, Dr. Green. And thank you, Dr. Green, and good evening, Board President Heil and members of the board. As Dr. Green has stated, we will dive into NWA and look at the transition that we are moving in towards in the new assessment. We still kept the rating system, and for the rating system for this transition, we feel like we're still developing. And we're developing because it's a new assessment. And it's also for our district, we're in a learning curve. At the district level, we're in that learning curve for understanding the new assessment, for ensuring that training and support on the rollout with our staff members, our principals, our teachers are in place. And then for our principals, the learning curve is understanding the administering of the test, that the teacher training is, is in place, and they're providing support in, in reading their building level reports. And for teachers, that learning curve is proctoring the assessment, reading the data, making instructional decisions from that data. And even for our students, it's test stamina. It's a change. It's a change for paper pencil. It's a change to online assessments. And for our parents, receiving that information as they attend parent-teacher conferences. As Dr. Green has stated, our state is also in a developing stage. And even yesterday, as I serve on a TAC committee down at the state level, we really sit down and talked about the assessments and looked at MSET 5. And I can tell you that they are still working on what they call the interim assessment, the survey assessment, and the testlets. And these were items that they were supposed to produce for us this year so that we could try to get a benchmark of where our students were around the state. There's a lot of concern in all of the districts in the state of Missouri because we're all without that compass, without that radar. And so they are now believing, at first they thought we would have those items by January, now it could be February. And in receiving those in February, it will not be able to provide us with a benchmark. So when we look at that, the state is also now looking at SY-15 assessments and ELA and math as making them a hold harmless, which means that they will not average those into our next year's APR score. They've also considered reporting out the data, but holding the APR scores until December of next year instead of releasing in August like they do, so that we can have time to go back, revisit that data, sit down, look at the cut scores, and make sure that we have good, clean data coming out for every district. So there's a lot of conversations around what's going on as we transition from the show-me standards into the Missouri Learning Standards, which is aligned to the Common Core. We've seen from other states where that great dip took place as they made that transition. So the state is really working hard to try to get that completely done. So as we dig into NWA or the Northwest Evaluation Assessment, we look at what that transition looks like. As we move from acuity, which was a criterion reference assessment that was a predictor, and it measured our show-me standards, and it was completely aligned to the show-me standards, we're now moving towards that realignment to the new state standards called the Missouri Learning Standards. And so what does that transition mean? That transition means there'll be an adaptive assessment now for all of our students. It also means it will be an online assessment for kindergarten through eighth grade. Last year, we piloted K-2. In the pilot, we first began to teach our students in kindergarten, first and second grade, how to take an online assessment. We also assisted them with reading the data and looking at the checklist. So we have a small pilot that occurred last year. This year, it's completely three through eight. Also, we're looking at five achievement levels in NWA. In our math assessment and in our acuity, we had below basic, basic, proficient, and advanced. In NWA, you now have low, low average, average, average high, and high. So we've now shifted from four levels to five. We also are assessing ELA, math, science, and reading. In acuity, we only assessed ELA, math, and science. And the science was only assessed on acuity C, the last one. The other piece that we're shifting to is that test stamina. That's so we can really begin to work on our students' technology skills, reading their assessments from online at the screen instead of having paper pencil. For years, third grade through eighth has always been a paper pencil map assessment. This year, for the first time in April, our students will take an online state assessment. We know our EOCs have been online for the last four years. This will be our first year for our students to take that. The other area that we have seen in the transition is our ELL and sped accommodations. We used to could do accommodations in small groups. That's pretty much gone after we did the first NWA. Because it's individualized and because it's adaptive, we're almost going to have to sit down teacher to student to provide those accommodations. And really, even talking with our Director of Special Ed today, he was talking about it may take three full weeks to get all of the accommodations in and get our students. So we'll, the positive about this, if there's a positive, is we have three practice runs before we get to the state assessment. We have NWA A, B, and C, which is a really positive thing for us to have. The other thing, it allows us to work out the bugs on connectivity, getting onto the platforms, and increasing the familiarity that our students have with an online assessment. So when we look at the process of transition and what that looks like, it looks like that we had in August, we did our first training. Each building brought four staff members in, and those first four staff members became train the trainer. And from that, they facilitated with the schools how to administer and proctor the fall assessment. Then in September, we brought every teacher, kindergarten through eighth grade together, and did three hours of training of how to pull their students' data, and how to look at that data and make instructional decisions for that data. Now, the curriculum and assessment team is following up with working with teachers, and we have some really great training going on currently that Mr. Gallin will speak to of how to use those reports and make instructional decisions. The other piece that we have is now as we transition, we're moving from IBD reports to Lexile scores. We're moving from the RITs, to a RIT score, which is a RASH unit. We are moving to the learning continuum, which Mr. Gallin will walk you through what that looks like. We're also looking at the district average RIT score, and the next chart has that score for you. And then the last piece of the process of transition, I can't talk about it enough, is the use of technology, getting our students used to using technology, and how to use that technology to take their assessments and to use the productivity tools within those assessments. So as we begin to look at one of the graphs that we have, and remember, we talked about the district average RIT score. I want to walk you through first how this graph is set up. As you look to the far left, this is set up a little differently than what we're used to looking at when we look at grades three, four, five, six. As you look here, this is on the reading assessment, grades three through eight. Then you have a goal, and in the NWA, a goal represents skills, knowledge, that they believe the student should have in that area. Goal two, goal three, and then there's your RITS, reading RIT mean, or your average for the district. So as we go across, what this now begins to shift us towards, moving from counting how many students are in below basic, basic, proficient, and advanced, we are now looking at what students know, what they're ready to be introduced to and develop, and then what is the next level of knowledge for them. And Mr. Gallin's going to again walk you through that continuum of learning in the presentation. So as you look at those, you can see that we know exactly where our students are with the district average. We have done this by building so that we know exactly where each building is. And then a lot of districts, in talking with NWA, begin to dig into their district average so that they know where their students are high, where are the concepts or the goals that they're low in. So forecast for the future, what does this mean? What's our next steps in using NWA? It's using the data to drive instruction. And in Mr. Gallin's presentation, you're going to really begin to see how the teachers are going to pull this data and really begin to drill down individually and make their instructional decisions. Well, we'll use the achievement status and the growth projections. NWA sets goals for every student, so we'll be able to monitor the progress of the students. The goal setting with individual students, each teacher will be able to set those goals. There is forms for the teachers to use. We will use the screening skills checklist and the survey assessment to monitor progress. We will progress monitor every two weeks our students that hit in the low, low average, and average range, so that we can progress and make sure they're making that progress as we move them through. And then finally, we will use the school and district essential reports as we move forward to continue to monitor this. One of the areas that we saw with giving the assessments in the content area is most assessments take, when we talked about test stamina, about an hour. Our students had a range, an average range of 32 minutes all the way up to 80 minutes. So this is a different area that we're moving into, but it's, it's a good area for our district because we're aligning to the Common Core as we move forward. Mr. Gallin is going to walk you through the curriculum and instruction and how we're shifting gears and how curriculum and instruction will, has learned about NWA.
Let me add a little commentary here, too. First of all, part of our move toward one-to-one is also driven by this online assessment that our students are going to have to know how to point-click, drag-drop, cut, paste, because the assessments are going to require them to do that. And time lost, learning how to do that could be time lost focusing on the assessment. So getting our students facile with learning how to do the things that the test is going to demand of them is a critical part of this. The other thing that we're doing is the NWA, while the state is figuring out what the standard is, we are basically using the national standard as our, as our benchmark, as a in-between until the state issues what are called testlets, or illustrations of what the Missouri Learning Standards actually look like, because those are still being formulated. So we're using, we're using that piece right now. So I just wanted to, the board and those who are listening to here, this is the strategy that we have in place. In the meantime, while the state is determining how it's going to actually set up the standards, we are banking on the, the Missouri Learning Standards are going to be very closely aligned to the national standard, and so we're doing national standard preparation now.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Howell, Dr. Green, board members, and members of the audience. As Dr. Marillo said, this evening, I'm going to take you now to the area of curriculum instruction and how we are using the NWA to assist us in our area, and, and some of the things we've learned already after our first administering of the NWA. I think one of our biggest concerns that we always have is to answer that question, are our students really learning? As we redesigned our curriculum to align with the Missouri Learning Standards, knowing that we're going to have a more rigorous assessment in the spring, we are concerned about the level of performance of our students. And knowing that, by using the NWA, being the fact that it is aligned with the Common Core, as Dr. Green has said, or in our case, Missouri Learning Standards, because it is more rigorous, we think we're going to get a clearer picture of whether or not our students are learning as we move from each of the NWA assessments. The other point that we have to keep in mind is we can't rely solely upon NWA. We're going to have to do additional tests. We're going to do formative assessments that our students, or our teachers will actually be designing. We're going to do some interim assessments. Hopefully, the state will eventually give us some of those, but again, we're not expecting those until after the first of the year, and we're not even sure we're going to get them then. And then the summary of assessments, but the summary of assessment for us would actually be the math. So we're not only looking at NWA, but we're looking at other states that have assessment banks or have already developed their state assessments, such as New York, Oregon. Their state assessments that are aligned to the Common Core are already out there. So we can pull those state assessments. We can use those as sample assessments to give us another reading, another data point that we can use in addition to the NWA. And our teachers and the curriculum coordinators will be doing just that. I think one of the biggest benefits, though, that we're going to get from the use of the NWA is how it's going to help us inform instruction. We have said all along that we believe in a personalized learning path for our students. And here in just a few minutes, I'm going to show you how we can use the data that we obtained from the NWA, and then actually look at this continuum of learning, and how we can use the continuum of learning to develop that personalized learning path. A lot has already been said about online assessment. I could add my two cents to that area, but I think it's been made very clear that the sheer fact that we are using an online assessment is going to be beneficial to us in, again, in the spring when we get ready for the state assessment. So let me show you how we have taken from that report that Dr. Marillo shared with you, where she showed you how our students are doing in these three goal areas, literature, informational text, and vocabulary acquisition. The information that we have already learned about how our students are doing in these three areas, but also some inferences that we can make now that we've actually seen the assessments and we've seen how our students are doing in these areas. As most of you know, we did not move to the Common Core in last year. We stayed focused on the GLEES and CLEES in Missouri in our testing grades. In kindergarten one and two, we were starting to use resources that did utilize some of the Common Core standards, and they were built into the resources that we were using. As a result of that, when you look at that data that Dr. Marillo shared, our primary students did pretty well. It did, you know, we know that that is an area of focus in the primary grades in the Common Core, and because of that, we're pleased with their performance, but it also told us that we were going to need to work on that area in the intermediate grades to more degree. You've heard Dr. Green talk about how important it is that with the Common Core, as we move to the Missouri Learning Standards, informational text. Our students are going to be spending much more time with informational texts than they have with nonfiction, or with fictional texts. And so this has to be a focus for us, and we found that to be true once we looked at the performance of our students on the NWA. It's an area that we're going to have to also differentiate because students are coming to us with different levels of ability for that one. And then the third goal here, vocabulary, is just some common sense. If our students are going to be able to do well in literature as well as in informational text, they are going to have to have the vocabulary to go along with it. So we have to work to develop the vocabulary of our students, and we're making that a specific focus again with our students. Now, keep in mind that if I was a teacher, I have general information now about each of these goal areas that make up the NWA. Let's say I would just want to look at literature, and I'm ready to move now into designing for myself, my small groups, and/or an individual learning path. So I would go to that, to this particular report. Now, this is just a sample. It says math, but actually, in reality, I would pull it up, and it would be literature. It would focus in on, on that particular goal. And all I would have to do, if you wanted to say my name was on there, maybe I'm Student A. The teacher could click, do two things. Teacher could click on Student A, and it would pull up my personal learning path, which you see here. Or the teacher could actually click on the small group. The group can be made up of several students. There you see Student A and B. So if I clicked on that group of students, it would take me to a learning path for that goal, again, literature and the area of reading. And these are then the skills that in the first column, I pretty much know those. Those are skills that I need to have enhanced, and the teacher needs to reinforce those with me because I've pretty much got those skills down. But in that second column, I'm needing to have those skills developed. And then in that third column, are skills that are a little beyond me, that are skills that the teacher approaches correctly, I can have those, I can develop some of the skills in that third column as well. So let me take you through more specifically. If you'll look, and I've given you in your orange folder, you might want to pull out the white sheet. If your eyes are better than mine, you can read it on the screen. If they're not, you're going to need to have that white sheet. So let's look in the first column. Looking in that first column, just read down through the verbs that you see there. And you'll notice that they're doing things like locating, summarizing. Get about halfway down, and they're analyzing passages with one to three complex paragraphs. And then you go on down towards the bottom, they're doing some comparing and contrasting, and then there's a couple of skills there that involve inferring. I go over to the middle column. Now, when we talk about the NWA, we talked about it being a more rigorous assessment. We also talked about it being aligned to the Missouri Learning Standards. This middle column is going to demonstrate that. Again, if you'll look at the verbs, and you get a sense that there's a lot more comparing and contrasting being done, there's a lot more inferring being done. And so again, let me use the example that I used in the first column, where I said they would analyze passages, one to three complex paragraphs. If you go over to the middle column, I'm now analyzing paragraphs that are five to 10 paragraphs. And not only do I analyze those, I have to rephrase the main idea of the literacy text and then go on to form a short sentence related to that. So you see how much more rigorous it has become? Now, if I was a teacher, it would do me a lot of good to know that my student can do that skill using one to three paragraphs. But now I'm going to need to move my students over to the more rigorous side and start doing exercises with them that would develop them in a more rigorous way, using multiple paragraphs and doing more with that work. So if I had a student that's really struggling in that area, but I still wanted to move, I might pull them into individually or in a small group and work with them before I actually have them do that work. I might give them some pre-teaching so that they have a better chance of being successful at that skill when I get ready to teach that. I would also be looking at my curriculum, and I would go through here and I'd mark where these skills are going to be taught and when the skills are going to be taught. So I make sure I'm covering as many of these as I possibly can to get my students as far along as I possibly can. And if I would come across a skill that might not be in the curriculum, then I would know that's something that I'm going to have to add, and I'm going to have to reinforce on my own. So there's a variety of ways that teachers can use this document. I would certainly have one of these pages for each of the goal areas for each of my students, so that I could keep track of them and how they're doing, or at least one of these for each of the small groups that would be made up in my classroom. So with this information now that we showed you how we can use, and I just mentioned, we just showed you a couple of reports tonight, we'll be continuing to show you more information later on. One of the reports that's provided to teachers gives all the lists of all the students, and it gives them an icon that's a book. And if the teacher clicks on that book, then it will provide the teacher with a list of reading material that she could share with parents, that then it could be, that the parents could have to select for their student. It would be reading material that would be at the appropriate level and the appropriate rigor for their particular student. So Dr. Sanders is going to come now, and she's going to share with you how we're going about working with teachers from the standpoint of school leadership, and how we're monitoring the work that our teachers are doing in this area, utilizing not only NWA but other resources
Thank you, Mr. Green. Good evening, Chair Heil, Superintendent Green, and members of the board. You have heard that Dr. Marillo... You have heard that Dr. Morello provide information on the new assessment that is created by the Northwest Evaluation Association, which is a measure of academic progress. We choose to call it NWA. You've heard Mr. Goen provide the response that CNI and curriculum and professional development is, and how they're responding to that data. And so, we turn to school leadership, whose job it is to monitor and measure that which matters, and that is student achievement and student learning by examining the building leaderships, processes, practices, and procedures to enhance student learning. One of the things that we know that is most important is to have the right data. You must begin with the right data in order to chart the right course. And what we know is that NWA is an assessment process that is used by over 2,000 school districts and over 3 million students have been involved in setting the norms. And so, we know that it is a valid and reliable measure of how to test our students' growth as well as their achievement. And so, as you look at, as we move forward here, as you look at what we have talked about before, Paul Bamrick Santoyo talks about leverage leadership at all levels of the district. Everyone must be in sync. Everyone must be working together. And so, we begin at the district, and we look at what is it that the district should be doing? And one of the things it is, is that the district must do is analyze the trends. And what we have done, you've seen information about reading. We've analyzed the trends. We know where there is a need for our students for refinement. And so, in the area of reading, it is not only reading, but it's writing, planning, organizing, revising, and providing research. And what we know is, is that we will put an emphasis on the writing, the six traits of writing plus one. And those are the items that it is very important, when we talk about argumentative literacy, that our students are not only able to articulate, but they also must be able to write and be able to also communicate in numeracy. But as we look at writing and those six traits, we are aware that the student must know voice, which is their own personal tone. They must know ideas is one of the traits, and that's the main message that they're trying to convey. They must have organization, which is structure. Word choice, which is vocabulary. Sense fluency, which is, does it have a rhythm and a flow when they write? And of course, then conventions are very important as well. But also, it is finally the production of the presentation of their thought process on paper. So, we know that we need to increase opportunities for our students to engage with the six traits plus one process. In addition, as we analyze the data and we saw that literature, which is fiction, and you have seen on that continuum of learning, there are a number of things, but ideas for the literature that a person must be able to do is to restate supporting details. Also, one of the other goal areas is informational text. And what we have known is that Common Core is going to put a major emphasis on informational text, which is nonfiction. And that is in order to make these inferences, make these predictions. And so, as we continue on forward then, looking at monitoring and supporting student instruction and student learning, we are having our principals and our staff, we're trying to ensure that they are, that they are familiar with the test and that they understand the test. You heard each of us, as we've come before, said, "This is a shift. It's a dramatic shift. Shifting to Common Core is a dramatic shift of complexity for all members of the organization." And so, one of the things and that we've been training our principals and our staff is to understand the goal performance area, to understand the RIT or the RASH score, which is that range, what we know on any given time and point. A student is not a one-point type of individual, is that they have a range of abilities, and those are called the RIT score. The Lexile score, understand what is a Lexile score? And that truly is the student's ability to read with fluency at the difficulty of the text and to have that, what the goal is, is that any text that is selected for a student is that they are able to comprehend and read fluently 75%. So, the Lexile score is very important. To understand the growth projections, because what we say is that although we're very interested, all of us with our focus on full accreditation, we're interested in students growing. And what is that growth projection that we should be expecting our students to have, every individual student? The continuum of learning, as you have seen, understanding how to utilize that and maximize that. We know that the students are, the teachers should understand, and the students are, have the ability to understand on the far left-hand column of that, the, at 75, 73%. And as you move, the readiness is for that next column at the 50%, and that's where the focus should be. The class report, as you've heard Mr. Goen speak to it, it gives an overall view for the teacher of, these are the students who are sitting in front of you. And then, understanding the NWA platform and the teach-back lessons in order to reinforce. So, what we have been doing, you have heard us say, that if there is one heart for moving our students and the achievement, other than that classroom teacher and the success and the engagement that he or she has with the students, it is then providing job-embedded staff development, and that's through our data teams. So, we have been out and about looking at our data teams, assessing our data teams with a standard rubric. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to be in both of our middle schools along with one of our RPDC experts, and we are providing feedback to the schools on the teams that we did see in the middle schools. And what that information will do is provide us opportunities, provide truly tailored training for each individual school. What is it that they need to know? What is it that they're evidencing? What is it that they're asking for? And new, well, a new twist on an old but effective strategy is the classroom walkthrough. We've been doing classroom walkthroughs, and you know that's where you go through and you make a very quick assessment. It is not truly for evaluation. It is for the principal to get a environmental scan of what is the, what are the needs of their, of their building. And so, what Dr. Green has asked is that, what our friends at DESI as well as you, the members of the board, how do we know this is being pushed down into the classrooms? How do we know that this is, that it's happening at a classroom level and not at a global level? And so, therefore, there have been goals that have been set on these walkthroughs. The cabinet will engage in three walkthroughs, classrooms each month. There will be seven of, seven members of the cabinet that will be doing that. The academic team will have five classroom visits. The CNI department, there are nine of them, they will make eight. The principals, there are 36 of them, and they will do 10 as a goal. And school leadership, there are three, other than myself, when I'm on the academic team, and there will be 30, making a total of 480 classrooms that we will visit every month. I think that's pretty impressive. I think that allows us to say what is truly going on in the classrooms and to begin to provide the kind of support that is needed. As we continue to move forward on goal-setting and preparing for success, because we know that's where we want to be. We want success not only for the district, but more importantly, for every student, for them to feel success. And so, the district has set MPI goals. And you know that the MPI goals translate into our collective APR score, which gave us the 92.5, and our aim this year is at 110. And so, each building has received their MPI goal. And what we say is that, to each building principal, is that with the goals that are set, we're looking at each of the content areas to have at least a level of 300 and hopefully better. But if every school puts their oar in the water and they row their part of the boat, we'll all get to where we want to get. In the building, with their goal-setting, we have already, the school leadership team asked, when the scores came out, what are your response? What are the goals that you have set for, after looking at your APR data? What are the goals that you've set for your school? And so, one of the commonalities that the schools have set is to increase our students' keyboarding skills because they're really good with their thumbs as, you know, using their phone. But when they're going to be taking this test, they're going to need to be proficient with keyboarding skills. In addition, we're asking the, not only just the teachers, but the principals to go along with the teachers and the instructional coaches to attend trainings, that it should not be a one-time or one-shot stop. It should be intermittent, ongoing. As we continue to look at the goal-setting for, oops, the goal-setting for preparing for success, looking at the building and the classroom, we want to afford our students to have the opportunity to really become proficient with those productivity skills, the cutting, the pasting, the dropping, the dragging, all of those that we were looking at. An example, Dr. Lewis and I were prior to the board, that one of the smarter balance exercises we're asking the student to do, and that was to find a sentence and to drop and drag it as the answer. We were looking also, and we saw that no longer is one answer, the only answer. It is what are the correct answers? And so, if our student thinks that it's only one answer, there are multiple answers that are sometimes accurate. So, giving them the opportunity to become familiar with what they're going to be asked so that there are no surprises for them. You've heard us talk about using the data for groupings in order to have the learning stations that are attendant to each student's needs. One of the things that we know is that with these RIT scores and the bands that the students are in, each of the learning stations will have leveled kinds of activities for the students to engage in. With the students, we also are asking them with goal-setting to provide goal-setting. In each of those middle schools I was in, the, this week, the students are being asked to, with incentives, thanks to Dr. Green, there are incentives, that they are being asked to know what was their MAP 2014 score? How does it compare to their NWA score? And what goal have they set for themselves? And they're just being randomly asked that, and of course, then they can gain one of their mascot bucks, whether that's a tightener, a Viking buck, and cash it in. But the students, it has become almost a game. The idea then is to help those students to be the CEO of their own learning. I was in one of the schools, and I saw a folder that had, "I am the CEO of my own learning," and it had the student's name on the folder. For the parents, you have inside the folder that you have, I think it's yellow, a bright goal. There is an example of questions that will be posted on our website in accordance to goal, the board policy 4.1.7 of continuing to engage our parents. And it is the frequently, the list that you have happens to be a list of frequently asked questions that parents might ask about NWA so that they can, you know, at their own leisure, go and look and see, does this answer the questions or do I still need more, you know, more answers to the questions? You'll also note on that bright gold, golden rod is what they used to call it, packet is, that there are also places, websites that they can go. How can I help my student with math? What are some reading types of books that my student should be reading at his or her identified Lexile level? So, we're going to be posting something like this for the parents. The main message that we have to the parents is to just make education very important to the students and to let them know how important education is. And if they can get their student here every day, then we will be able to teach and to move their student as that student is very capable. One of the things that we did find with our students is that they were unaware that we could tell how long they had put their energy and time on their test. And we had students say, "You know, I only spent 12 minutes on the test. How did you know that?" And it is because we can tell with the technology. And so, as we continue to build their stamina, we will, you know, continue to monitor and to be given that type of individual attention to the student. On our last slide, as we look, you will see each of the principals as well as the students received a book that is called Applying Reports Workbook. The item in front of you is a goal-setting form that a principal can use, a teacher can use. You'll notice that it does have information on, or suggested format on, how is it that one might want to talk about setting goals with a group of students? There's also one about having an individual student conference. There is one about how, and do I explain this to parents? And then there is information to prompt or to nudge the thinking of the principal. What we know at this stage then is that there is much to do. There is much to learn. None of us at this stage feels that we are an expert with NWA, but we have roadmaps from other districts that have utilized this tool and used it very successfully. And so, we will also, from this first test administration, take those lessons learned and apply them so that you will be able to see even greater growth in January. The administrator training, we've discovered that needs to be ongoing and not, as I said, one-stop shopping, so to speak. We will engage our students in the importance of this test. What we know about students is that, or probably about any of us, our human nature, is when we become adults, we know that it's probably not socially appropriate to say we want it all about us. But the kids are, when we tell them, "It really is all about you. It really is about your individual score, not your neighbor's score, but your own, your own score and your own growth that you are making." We will continue to provide our students with the opportunity to become proficient with the productivity tools. We will maximize, and this is what is extremely exciting, the use of the one-to-one devices. This time, we had to kind of herd our students into computer labs because they didn't have the one-to-one devices. By the time of the next administration, they will not only have their one-to-one device, but they will also have had opportunities to practice with those productivity tools. And we will continue to closely monitor our students' test stamina and to continue to motivate them to do their very best on the test. We will address the areas, as I've given you some indication that we already are aware of, where our students did not do well. So, as we move forward, we'll keep our eyes on the prize, and the prize is our students' growth, our students' achievement. We know that we have a long way to go. We know that the learning curve is steep, but we do have the collective will. And if we keep our eyes on our individual students, then we know that the collective APR and all the numbers that they might say adults are concerned about will take care of themselves. But more importantly, we will have served our students at the highest level possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green, and thank you to your team for the presentation. Board members, we're going to go around with a series of questions. Board members, it's limited to one question each for the first round, and then if there are questions that you did not get answered, we'll come back to you and make sure we get everything done. So, Mr. Evans, we will start with you. Dr. Hartsfield?
I wish I could take his questions. I have a list of questions. Since I just have one quest, a lot of one question at this time, I have read up on this a little bit, and I understand the MAP supposedly tests our students in content on specific areas. And then, with this Northwest Evaluation Assessment, it's a vertical correlation with that, and then you can identify their specific capacity. My question is, it seems that this is a model that works well with a proficient individual learner? Yeah? I'm concerned when we have 70% of ours who are at lower than proficiency. And when you talk about all these individualized plans that will come up, if you're able to disaggregate this information, I'm sort of wondering how not only teachers are going to be overwhelmed with the many ways they're going with the many ways they're going to have to instruct, students might be overwhelmed with now an additional four times a year evaluative tool that is then going to give instruction towards future curriculum? I'm just concerned with how does this really work with our population? You said you're using the roadmaps of other districts. Were they in our similar situation?
The, sometimes we say that the mission and our students have not changed. I'd like to think that when we were doing the Show Me Standards, that we were, our students were still, for the most part, the 70%. The teachers were being asked individualize. What this does is that it allows a teacher to have groupings of students to know what their academic interference is. And so, now we can group them and, you know, instruct the students in various groups at the different levels of their performance. And in the past, we've not had that laser-like focus of who are all the students with the same kinds of needs? And so, this makes it be a little bit more laser-like. When you asked about the 2,000 school district, over 2,000 school districts and 3 million students that took it, there were urban as well as suburban as well as rural. It is a cross-section of students.
I think I'd elaborate on that part about grouping or clustering of the students. We've worked out for a couple of years to get our students, our teachers skilled in working with small groups. And they relied a lot on their assessments we do have, but they've also relied upon their own innate knowledge of the students. So now, we have another data point for them that they can tap into to help them to figure out. And for me, the big difference is the levels. So while I can identify that a student might be able to refer based upon theme, now I can see that I, where I can, where I can go to the next level and how I can take that group of students or that individual student to the next level. The continuum really helped me understand what future learning could look like for these kids and kind of where I need to take them. Like maybe if they can comprehend and analyze a particular text with something that's got one or two paragraphs, the thing I've got to do now, in which my NWA tells me, I need to move up to five or six texts or paragraphs. I've got to continually challenge my kids and not be satisfied to stay back there at those lower levels.
Mr. Rogers? Let's, let's go around, we'll get to you in a second. Mr. Hand? There you are, Ms. Montero.
Kind of to elaborate, since this is something new for the district, I've seen it done at two other school districts. And it is, it does look very overwhelming and very complicated. But I'm hoping that this discussion is going on a lot more with the union and the teachers about that it actually, when the child does the test, it actually develops the whole plan and does a predictor. It does a prediction even into how, actually, how far have you wanted to go? Actually predicts all the way to college, actually, which is really amazing. And it's very pretty, it's pretty accurate. So it's nothing, I'm hoping that this is going to be looked upon, I'm hoping from the teacher's side, that this is going to be something easier for them. They don't have to do any planning. It does it all for you. So wherever the child tests at, that, that prediction, it says, "Okay, Johnny is here at A, B, and C, but Johnny should be able to go all the way to L." And by this time, and it tracks that and it gives the planning to the teacher. Well, Johnny needs this specific sentence structure or this specific reading book. And it, really, there's no planning on the part of the teacher other than how she wants to group the kids together or he wants to group the kids together or maybe getting more detailed in the parent-teacher conference. But it really does, which I really love about this, is that it predicts all the way up to and tracks very, very specifically, I mean, to like, even like 2.5 kind of, it gives it into decimals really of where the child is and what they need to do and what kind of, it gives, it gives out the sentence structure. It gives out the math structure. It's really amazing. And once you learn it, it's very easy to follow. But it does look overwhelming at first. But I'm hoping more discussion with training and teachers that they look at this as a benefit and they'll hopefully cut planning time on their half because it actually does the planning for them. But my question was going to be, when Ms. Marillo was talking about in the beginning, I had it right here, about ELL and SPED accommodations have to be restructured. Could you go specifically a little bit more about that? Like, are you offering extra timing accommodations or scribe? What do you mean by that on those for ELL and SPED?
Well, we're, we followed with ELL, I'll start there first. With ELL, we followed kind of the state rule. So we did not provide accommodations for English Language Arts and Reading because we need them to begin practicing just as. And that was a discussion that I had with our director of our ELL and also with a couple of principals as we began to kind of talk about rolling this out. The accommodations can be provided for math and science. In doing that, though, they do get the extra time. It's on time, just like our state assessment will be. So they had the extra time. And we could see where we had that wide range of time because we were looking at to see the test scores in correlation to time on, on test. And so, to see if we could see, I, we were really, because this is our first time of really digging into this, we were flipping it every way we could to see if we could figure out ways to better assist our ELL students and our SPED students. The same with SPED, the time is the same. What is different with this being adaptive? With our MAP assessment or our EOCs, we are able to almost put headphones on students and read it to them in math and science. With this being adaptive, we're seeing that the headphones won't work because once children start either dropping or raising, the test questions are changing. They're all over. So that's what made us back up and say, "Whoa, whoa, we now need to do almost one-on-one accommodations with this because they can receive the accommodation." But that means also, but the positive for this, if there's anything positive, we can come out of the growing pains and the learning curve is, we are learning now what we would be experiencing in April. So we're going to be, our students are going to go through the process three times for the MAP, for the NWA, and one time in April for the MAP and the EOC assessment. So this provides us three times to go through the process and to learn the technology and the productivity tools that Mr. Dr. Green talked about with the highlighting and pulling up your calculator and your graphic organizer and being able to come down and drag and pull wherever it tells them, besides learning to read, because most of us will still print off and look at it in paper pencil or look at it in paper to edit and want to have something to touch and hold. I mean, this green book, we've all, you almost see everybody carrying it around like a Bible. And we got, we got paper in it, we're highlighting, we're learning, we're working with teachers. Mr. Gowen's group is currently now three-hour sessions with teachers to go back through and align their DRA with the Lexile scores and then their RIT scores and what does that look like? So it does look like a lot, but it's a good, a good amount, and it's going in the right direction because we're going step for step where the Common Core is going. So where the nation's going, KCPS is going, and we're not skipping that beat. So we really are pleased with the progress. And it will take us a while to really wrap our arms around and get a hold of this.
Ms. Robinson?
Well, it was a continuation of that.
Okay, thank you for the FAQ. I really appreciate that. Kind of knocked out a couple of my questions. But there are a couple of gaps for me. The, this NWA is K through 8, and we do the one-to-one initiative for grades 1 through 12. And we mentioned the one-to-one, being able to help the kids acclimate to technology. So there seems like there's a group that's missing there. And then we also do MAP testing for high schoolers. And we do have a high schooler that is, I mean, a high school, one that I know of particularly that didn't have any significant achievement towards MAP. And so, I really like the comment that you made about giving the right data to chart the right course. So how are we able to chart that course for our high school students who are going to be taking the MAP?
We've got end-of-course that, or end-of-quarter assessments that we use. We also do the mock end-of-course exams. And so, even though we're not going up into the high schools with NWA, we still have multiple assessments that we're using to help plan that course as well. Get a chance where you can sit down with Marcelina Learyos, our math coordinator. And she is, does phenomenal work with the math teachers at the secondary level, doing just what you're talking about. Taking the assessments that they do take, their formative assessments, their end-of-quarter assessments and their mock EOCs, and how they pull that data together and plan what needs to be done. She's already got packets ready for the kids to help prepare them for Algebra I and the assessment there because she's already gone back and identified skills that our kids didn't do well on last year that they need to work on this year. So we can show you some of those packets and some of the things we've, that we've already literally are doing to prepare kids at the high school level. And it's online, yes. These assessments are taking place online as well. That's probably a important point, I almost forgot. So there again, where our younger kids are having to manipulate and use these tools, our high school kids are going to have to do the same thing. So all the assessments we're doing, such as the end-of-course, is an online assessment as well.
Mr. Evans, did you have any follow-up questions about anything? Dr. Hartsfield, go back to you. Mr. Rogers? Mr. Hand? Ms. Montero?
Thank you. I was going to go back to asking, what was your timeline? And the, what is the total amount of tests a student takes throughout the year, including the MAP and anything else? And then what is the timeline that you were trying to add these three tests of the NWA?
We are, we just finished the, this Friday, the window closes for our K-2 students. Because it was new to the building, we did not run K through 6 and the elementary all at the same time. So we broke those two apart. We went 3, 6 elementary and then 7 in middle school and 8. So our second window opens in January. Our last window is in March. So we are staying right there with the national timeline that they use. I do have a matrix that I can put in the Friday packet that shows you all of the district assessments, what we're measuring in those district assessments and the time that those are administered. So I can, it's a one-sheeter. We took our assessment calendar, my assessment director did, and created a matrix, so it's a one-sheet, so every school could see what they're assessing, what they're measuring, and the time that they're doing that in. So I can put that in Friday packet.
I, I, we're not, we're not, we're not, we have to remove the acuity.
Oh, yes. Yes. No. That's correct.
Okay, so we're not doing the MAP acuity, they're swapping. That's good to hear that it's actually a different, that we're not adding more testing. And that was my concern as far as the discussion with the teachers and the union. But also, so that's good to know. I have seen where the NWA was used as a predetermination, like children coming into the beginning of the school year. And I've seen that work really good. And I have also seen, Dr. Green, where when schools are trying to start out with NWA, the first test with the children and staff, it's very confusing because it is different on how they're doing the testing. And like you said, there's more than one answer to the test. So you probably will see that on your first thing because I've seen that at two different districts where it is confusing for staff and it is confusing for, for children. I've also seen this really utilized as well, like I said, in the beginning of the school year, so you can see where the kids are at and that drop of, the discussions we have love about tension, what they lose in the summertime. Concern was, how are we getting this information out to the parents? Tyler or something more simpler? Because even though it's on the website, we still have parents that don't have internet. A good portion of our district does not have internet. So I'm wondering how to bring this information out to our parents in a very simple fashion to tell them that this, this testing is being swapped out for MAP. And here is, where some sites you can go to to get help.
My symposium, in fact, just recently as last night, with a group of about 40 parents, we shared this information at Garfield. And so, that circuit is one. But there are multiple circuits in which we're sharing this information. Our principals are in respective schools. Dr. Sanders, you want to elaborate further on that?
Yes, besides utilizing, and you know, one of the good pieces about the one-to-one initiative is that every parent will have, you know, the opportunity to have a device, you know, now. Also, a second piece is that, you know, the SACS will be used, DAC will be used, you know, our traditional ways. We'll also have the student-led conferences, the parent-teacher conferences. So there'll be opportunities at that point. There are, many of our schools are planning what we call parent nights. And they'll, you know, sometimes it's about math, sometimes it's about, you know, this particular assessment. We know everyone's on a learning curve because they were somewhat accustomed to acuity. And now it is the NWA.
Ms. Robinson?
Last question for me. There was a time where the community was extremely engaged around when we did specifically MAP testing, where they would come in, help with tutoring, get the kids excited. Is there a community engagement component of all the testing that we're doing throughout the year where we can get young professionals in the schools to encourage the kids?
I wouldn't say there isn't a formal, formalized sense. We, I mean, our volunteers are certainly welcome to, with the tutoring that we have going on and reading, many of those actually help when we get around to the testing season or testing time. They actually switch from being the assistance with the reading and actually help with the getting ready for the assessment. I think some, in some cases, naturally there, but I don't think there's a formalized organizational structure for that just yet. But that's something we'll look at.
Dr. Green, if I could, that is true. You have started the initiative with the City Corps and the Diplomats Now, and that will bring young persons in, almost like a Peace Corps, and to assist. And we are already going to be sending some people to Seattle to learn more. And that's through a partnership that we're exploring. So that would be like bringing in, you know, almost like Peace Corps into young college professionals.
First of all, I just want, I hope you see that we're not sitting back, even though there's a sea of uncertainty with the State Department as to what the standards are going to look like and what direction they're going to go. We're positioning our, our staff and students to be ready for whatever the state rolls out. And I, I hope you see, be proactive in every way that we can. I also want to share with the board, our next board meeting, the 22nd, I believe it is, I will be at the Council of Great City Schools, so I will not be here. I will be presenting on several sessions and facilitating another one. So they, they got, they put me to work. So in that regard, I'll be representing us, but I will not be here. And I want to make sure the board do that.
Thank you very much, board members. Thank you for a good meeting. Appreciate all your service. Go Royals, and we are adjourned.